Virtual Town Hall meeting. As some of you may know, we normally are helping advocates go up to the Capitol this time of year to visit with their legislators, but we thought it was best not to do that this year. So we're trying this new format out for size to see how it works to allow to connect our advocates with legislators to talk about issues that are important to them. I mean, who knows when we go back to some type of normal, we may still try to do some of these things virtually. Because this is an absolutely great turnout. We had over eighty people register for our first Town Hall, so we're excited about that. So we may find out that doing some of these things virtually may be the way to go. Because people don't have to travel. And so, thank you all for attending. And I also want to give a special thanks for our state senators and representatives that have joined us today. We do hope that you find this informative and hopefully also helpful. So just a quick overview of our hour together today. I'm going to talk very briefly about the council. And then I'm going to turn it over to Bill, our public policy manager, who's going to talk about our legislative priorities. Then we're going to hear from the council's vice chair, Brady Wurger, about his self advocacy story. And then Amanda Milham is going to share all of her great advocacy that she's been doing with the adult changing tables. Carol Cross, then also a member of our council, is going to share her advocacy as from a family perspective. And then we do want to give any of our senators or representatives a chance to make a few comments about the presentations if they choose, no pressure. And then with our remaining time, we'll open it up for discussion. We are going to have people stay on mute during the presentations, but you can use the chat function to make comments and ask questions. And then when we do open it up for discussion, we'll ask that you raise your hand by using the reaction button that's on the bottom of your screen, your Zoom screen, and then we will call on you. So just a little bit about the DD Council. We may have some new faces with us today. We are a federally funded agency. We are just a small three-person office, but we have a very strong twenty-four-member council who guides our work. And our council is made up of sixty percent self and family, self-advocates and family members. So the network that we do focuses on advocacy, making the community stronger, and policy improvements. So that space around advocacy, that's why we're here today. The council does advocate for people with disabilities, but we really are much more effective when we do that advocacy work with people with disabilities. And also make sure that they have the tools that they need to do their own advocacy work without us. And that's a great thing, too. But we do have two projects that help us with that. We have our network of advocates that we call Iowans with Disabilities in Action. And then we have our public policy resources that we call Infinet. Hopefully, everybody joining us today are familiar with those two resources. But if not, do put your email in the chat function and we'll make sure that we can get those resources to you. So that's it for me. I'm going to turn it over now to Bill.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Brooke. And I'm so excited for our time together. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to join us and to learn more about the Iowa Developmental Disability Council. Like Brooke said, my name is Bill Colston. I'm the public policy manager with the council. And our goal is to create space and spur action regarding issues facing people with disabilities through advocacy, empowerment, and collaboration. And before we get to the best part of the agenda, our speakers, I want to just take a second to share our legislative priorities for 2021. So you can see our priorities kind of a little more in-depth, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to urge lawmakers to support policies that increase community options and services while also building on the capacity of the community to support all individuals with disabilities. And our twenty-one legislative priorities are in response to that overall reaching goal. We want to establish reliable funding for the regional mental health and disability service systems that fully funds all core services, additional core services, and expand services to Iowans with developmental disabilities and brain injuries. Our second priority is also regards to funding. Adequately fund a state Medicaid program that ensures access to groups of community services for Iowans with developmental disabilities. And then finally, the most, you know, thing that's connected both to the funding is to expand our ability to have caregivers, expand the availability, their knowledge, their skills, and their compensation to professionals, peer professionals, family members, and the direct support workers. So I'm excited to announce our first speaker. Brady is, as Brooke had mentioned, works with the DD Council and is a true advocate. So it's my pleasure to introduce our first speaker, Brady Wurger. Brady is the vice chair of our council and a tireless advocate for Iowans.
Hi, guys. My name is Brady Wurger. Like Bill said, I'm a client advocate. I'm also on the Iowa Developmental Disabilities Council where I serve as the vice chair. I'm also a community ambassador at the University of Iowa Centers for Disabilities. And I just kind of want to take this time to kind of talk a little bit about my story. And to where my story, kind of where I've, kind of my journey on where I was at five, six years ago to where I'm at now. In 2011, I moved to the Glenwood Resource Center here in Glenwood from NeuroRestorative in Carbondale, Illinois. While I was at Carbondale, I really struggled with my, I guess, with my disability. I had a lot of behavior issues which caused me to not get help. Psychiatric wards in Illinois would not accept me to get help, so the only option was to be arrested. I was arrested twice and worked with the court system there in Illinois to come back to Iowa. I was able to come back to Iowa and get accepted at the Glenwood Resource Center. You know, when I moved to Glenwood Resource Center back in 2011, there was a lot of, I guess, a lot of barriers and hoops that I needed to address and can jump into. And, you know, it was not my staff, it was not my counselors that made this change. It was directly from me saying, you know, hey, you know, you can't live your life like this anymore. And I finally realized that, you know, the life I was living was just, it was not a good life. So I decided to step up in my life and say, I can't do this anymore. So I worked with my team of staff at the Glenwood Resource Center. Like I said, I moved to Glenwood in 2011. And about two and a half, almost three years ago now, I was able to move into an A-CBS waiver home here in Glenwood, which is a state-run waiver home that the Glenwood Resource Center oversees my waiver home. I have done great. I have done great. This has been a good transition for me. When it comes down to, when it came down to me deciding from moving from the ICF to Selby Glenwood Resource Center into the community, I had a really big choice to make. And that choice was, or the question was, where does Brady want to live? And, and I, you know, it was really tough. You know, I'm four and a half hours away from my, from my mom and dad that live over in Waverly, Iowa. And I had a choice to either move closer to them or stay in Glenwood. And I chose to stay in Glenwood because as I led the Glenwood Resource Center, I was able to develop relationships with people that I had met through the community. And I was able to get mentors and volunteers. I was able to join a church and play guitar and sing in church praise bands. And my church was a really big advocate for me on, when I had to sit down to make the decision on, is, am I going to stay in Glenwood or move, you know, across the state and start all over with everything? So I chose to stay in Glenwood because of all the support that I had. And it's been great. I've done so well. And I think there were some people that were a little nervous about me moving in the community, but I think I proved them wrong. I proved them that I can go from an ICF facility to a community living situation and just totally blow their minds away, because that's what I did. My next thing I kind of want to talk about is how I advocate for people with disabilities. As most of you know, about a year ago, Cedar Rapids got hit by the duratio. And I was actually on Facebook and saw a video of two individuals in a Cedar Rapids nursing home that brought up a concern that really concerned me. And so I addressed to the Iowa Developmental Disabilities Council. I said, I said, this is something we need to look into to see how we can help. And the story that these individuals shared was because of the duratio, they lived in this nursing home facility that got totally just, it didn't get totally demolished, but there was some damage to the building. And this building was just outdated. They didn't have, you know, most buildings these days, if the power goes out, there's flights in the hallway to where they will come on for emergency purposes. You would have hallway lighting in case of a power outage. This nursing home was so outdated that they did not have that. They were limited fire extinguishers in the halls. So if there was a fire in the building, they had limited access to fire extinguishers. They didn't have electricity. They didn't have hot water. So I looked at that situation and called Bill and Brooke from the DD Council. And I said, said, what can we do to provide help to the people of Cedar Rapids and surrounding areas that, that need help? And Bill, you could probably answer this, but we were able to vote out a council to provide how much money for the duratio grant?
We gave out a number of thousand-dollar grants to a number of people that were able to do that. And they, and it was a pretty quick and seamless process. And Brady has hit this right on the head here. He, he sent Brooke and I both the video of the gentleman who was in a wheelchair in an area that was not accessible and was not safe for him to be there. And, and we were really sure how to expand. And then Brady followed up the very next day and then really felt like we needed to get out there and provide some outreach and, and just really was worried about the individuals there. And another thing just to note, Brady lives completely across the state from these individuals and made a huge impact and was relentless in his approach to make sure that we addressed it, so.
Yep. So I live in Glenwood, but I grew up in northeast Iowa in Manchester. So I kind of grew up around that northeast Iowa area. And not only thought it was a good way for me to advocate for these individuals for the duratio, but a good way to give back to the people of northeast, of northeast Iowa. So, and then my last thing I kind of wanted to talk about today was, trying to figure out how to word this, but, you know, just the mental health system in all, in the state of Iowa.
Brady, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Is that better?
A little bit.
Okay. I don't know what to do.
Right there, it's better.
Yeah, come closer, Brady. Yep.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Where was I? Okay, so sometimes I feel like sometimes when people are trying to apply or get mental health services here in the state of Iowa, but sometimes they're just not being heard completely. So a good example is my sister has an intellectual disability. And we have tried to, we've been trying to get her approved for the Glenwood Resource Centers for a long time. And for some reason, and I don't know the exact details, but they come back and say that she does not qualify. So then it limits her to, to, you know, what agencies will take her? A lot of these agencies she has lived in in the past are privately owned, privately owned waiver home services. And she's had a lot of behaviors, well, you know, like Woodward and GRC, when you have a behavior, they will work with you and not just, you know, say, oh, you're, you're having a behavior and we're going to kick you out of the program. She has not had that. She has been kicked out of programs, gone to psych wards because she has behaviors, gone to jail. And there's not an agency in the state of Iowa with her disability and her behaviors that will accept her. So we had to, we had to do something. And so we ended up having sent her to Tulsa, Oklahoma, to Brookhaven Hospital. She has done phenomenal there. But again, it's the frustration of not being able to serve her in-state. You know, Iowa already pays enough money for, to help individuals in-state. But why would, why would you want to send somebody out of state and pay more money when all you have to do is try to figure out how you can help them in-state? So I really advocate for my sister in that behalf because, you know, sometimes I feel a little bit bad in an aspect because I'm able to receive a lot more than what she has ever been able to receive. You know, I've been able to move to Glenwood Resource Center and get help. And and have a great team of staff to help me. If it wasn't for me moving to Glenwood, I don't know if I would be to where I'm at today. I don't know if you have heard, but I've really been advocating for Glenwood recently. They shut down a girl's house and moved all the clients to Woodward. And some of the guardians didn't like it. And they said, well, if you don't like it, you find another agency for your individuals. And I said, I've been talking with my state senator and representative David Speaker Mark Estelle, and I've said, this is just wrong. So I've really been advocating, and I've been able to get a little bit more answers from Kelly Garcia and some of the state people. But you know, I'm, I'm so glad that I'm able to be an advocate for people with disabilities. I see that one of our community ambassadors, Jessica's on here, and she can tell you as well that without the voices from our ambassadors, without the voices from our advocates, people with disabilities voices would not be heard. And they need people like Jessica and I to step up and advocate so that they can live a healthy life with a disability.
Thank you, Brady. Brady, that was wonderfully said. And I, I never get tired of kind of hearing the way that you can put words into your advocacy and, and the way that you're able to kind of passionately live for not only yourself, because I think you've done so many things for yourself as an advocate, which is an important hallmark of all people. It really shows kind of a determination that we all need. But I think you, what I was so inspiring, you always start out with what's affecting other people. And so, thank you today for sharing your story. Thank you for bringing your advocacy both to the DD Council, to Iowa, but also for all people with disabilities. So I'm going to kind of turn it over to our next speaker. And we're excited to be joined today by a great parent advocate, Amanda Milham. Amanda, thank you for joining us, and the floor is yours for your presentation.
Well, thank you guys for having me. And can everybody, oh, there it goes. So my name is Amanda Milham. I am a head coordinator for Changing Spaces Iowa, and I am a mother of four children. The little girl that you see on the screen, her name is Adeline. Adeline has been diagnosed with two rare chromosome deletions, intellectual disability, seizures, and autism. Unfortunately, with Adeline's complex medical history, the challenges she faces, Adeline does still require the need of diapering. That is what started my advocacy journey. And Iowa Family Leadership Training Institute has helped me become a better advocate for this issue. One of the most unnoticed issues while out in public are the lack of accommodations for special needs changing tables. The lack of adult changing tables is often not noticed to be an issue unless you face it daily. Standard public restrooms do not meet the needs of these children, teenagers, and adults who have grown well beyond the maximum weight limit to safely use a typical wall-mounted infant changing table. In these situations, the options available to us in public are limited to a few undesirable choices. Rather, there needs to be an area that is safe, private, and accommodating for these families with disabilities. With this experience, I have wanted to advocate for other families who are faced with the same issues as my daughter. I have reached out to many individuals to help advocate at a local and a state level. Changing Spaces Iowa Legislature has been a success because of many invested individuals and organizations committed to getting our loved ones off the floor. At this time, I would like to thank Representative Meyer Bossman and Sunday for sponsoring House File 492. And also Senator Brad Zahn for sponsoring Senate File 38. The Ark of Iowa, Iowa's with Disabilities Aging Action Network, Upgrade Medicaid, and the DD Council have all been critical partners in getting Iowans with disabilities off the floor through their outreach and vocal support of these legislative items. Changing Spaces Iowa's goal is simple, to bring change the current standard of accessible restrooms throughout the state of Iowa by promoting inclusion, access, and equality for individuals with disabilities that require the need for adult-sized, height-adjustable changing tables. It's important that these adult changing tables are height-adjustable. This type of changing table can raise and lower as needed by a user and/or caregiver. The bed of the changing table lowers so the user can get more, on more easily and/or be transferred by a caregiver with less injury, less risk of an injury, sorry. Then it is raised to a comfortable height for the caregiver. Also, we are requiring that it be a seventy-two inch in length, which will provide a safe accommodation for all individuals. I am asking for your support to help get our disabled residents off of the floor by pursuing a legislative bill that will address the critical need for adult changing tables. Right now, House File 492 will make it off the House floor. However, the companion bill, Senate File 38, has stalled. We need senators to move this bill forward. I need individuals who support this to help by lobbying their senator. And of course, any senators who support these bills to advocate in favor of them. We want these bills to make it pass the first funnel, which is March 5th. And last year, this bill died in the Senate. And I'm hoping with your help, this can go further this year. Your story is important. Your story gives a greater sense of who you are, your place in the world, your unique value, and what you can contribute to make a difference. My story alone cannot change the world. I need your help. If you do not already, please go on Facebook to Changing Spaces Iowa. On that page, I will keep everyone updated on what we are working on. And there are also announcements to spotlight locations that have installed adult changing tables. There are also scripts to use to contact your legislators with their email addresses listed. Again, we need your voice to keep Senate File 38 alive. And with your help, we can improve access for Iowans with disabilities. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amanda. That was great. I, just another example of sharing your voice, making a connection in the relationship you have with your legislator and how that has went forward. I think another important note about your story is that I think it was brought up last year on the, on the floor or was starting to be debated. And with the changes that we had with COVID, your efforts didn't stop when it wasn't able to move forward last fall. You, I know you did a lot of work this summer. And, and that's what sometimes it takes. It takes more than maybe a year or two to kind of get those things where we need them to be. So I really want to thank you for sharing your message and the important advocacy work you're doing and the difference it could make for Iowans to be more accessible and welcoming. So thank you. And, and last on our agenda today, we have another great parent advocate and also a key member of our council. So I want to thank Carol Cross for joining us today, and I'll let her have the floor. Thanks, Carol. I think we have Carol on mute here, maybe? One second. There you are.
Okay, I think we're good. I just want to apologize in advance. If you hear like buzzing and hammering, my neighbor is having their siding replaced today, and it's right outside my window. So I'm, I'm really sorry if you hear that. As Bill said, my name is Carol Cross, and my family and I live in Cedar Rapids. I'm on the DD Council as a parent advocate. I'm the primary caregiver of my twenty-one-year-old daughter, Laura, who has significant physical disabilities. I'm especially grateful for the opportunity to talk with you today because this Sunday is Rare Disease Day 2021. We are a family living with a rare disease diagnosis. And so I'm thankful for a chance to be a voice for the rare disease community. Today, I'll briefly share my family's rare disease story with you and then talk about an advocacy effort that I've been working on for about the past two years here in Iowa. Two of our three children were born with globoid cell leukodystrophy, more commonly known as Crebbe disease, after the doctor who first made the diagnosis. It is a degenerative neurological disease that is very rare, about one in one hundred thousand births. So in Iowa, statistically, a baby would be born with Crebbe disease about every two and a half years. Without treatment, a baby born with infantile Crebbe disease, which is the most common form, usually doesn't live past two years of age. It is a very cruel disease, affecting every organ in the body as well as the central and peripheral nervous systems. As the disease progresses, a person with Crebbe disease can no longer voluntarily move, loses their eyesight, cannot eat by mouth, needs twenty-four, twenty-four-hour attentive care. Our first child, our son Joshua, died from Crebbe disease when he was two and a half years old. When he was born in nineteen ninety-two, there was no treatment, and we were told to just take him home and just try to make him comfortable. His short life was filled with a lot of pain and a lot of struggle. Just a few days ago, we marked the twenty-sixth anniversary of his death. And the sorrow of his early death will always be with us, as you might imagine. Our third child, Laura, was also born with Crebbe's disease. While I was still pregnant, we had her tested because we knew of two children who had been treated for the disease with a bone marrow transplant. So when Laura was just ten days old, she began chemotherapy and had a bone marrow transplant when she was nineteen days old. She was the third person in the world to receive this treatment back in nineteen ninety-nine. So fast forward to today. Laura is twenty-one years old and lives a happy, interesting life. We, together, she and I, have written and published a book. We started a nonprofit sports program for individuals for individuals who use power wheelchairs. It's called the Cedar Rapids Power Soccer Association. It's on Facebook if you want to check it out. Laura loves history, one day hopes to go to the Great Pyramid of Giza. She delights in humorous events and stories, and her joyful laughter that sounds something like a loud pterodactyl squeal could melt a heart of stone. Of course, taking care of Laura is not easy and requires sacrifices by our family, but she is very loved and brings a tremendous amount of joy to our world and to the whole world. With treatment, an individual with Crebbe's disease has a chance to live a happy, longer life. Our family knows this firsthand. It's hard to express how different Joshua's life was from Laura's life. 20 years later, we know that the bone marrow transplant wasn't a cure for Crebbe's disease. It was a very effective treatment. There is hope that a cure for Crebbe disease is on the horizon. Just this month, a third pharmaceutical company was granted FDA approval for a gene therapy drug for Crebbe's disease. While Crebbe disease is rare, we do have a really strong network of families and researchers and doctors who are working for individuals with Crebbe disease to improve the quality of life and to ultimately cure the disease. But like everything in the world, there is a catch. When the disease has progressed far enough that symptoms are present, the treatment available, the treatments available do not improve the quality of life for the person diagnosed with Crebbe's disease. So diagnosis must happen before the symptoms are present. So testing for Crebbe disease as early as possible is really imperative. Two years ago, Laura and I met our state representative, Tracy Ellert of District 70, when we went for a day at the Capitol sponsored by Iowans with Disabilities in Action. Following our initial meeting, we spoke with Representative Ellert about Crebbe disease and our desire to see it added to the list of diseases that every baby born in Iowa is tested for through the newborn screening program. We told her that we wanted every Iowa baby born with Crebbe disease to have the same chance at life that Laura was given, and we wanted to spare every Iowa family the heartbreak of losing a child to Crebbe when effective treatment is available. Last year, Representative Ellert and 10 co-signers introduced House Bill HF 2121 that would add Crebbe disease to the Iowa newborn screening panel. We, along with several Crebbe families that live in Iowa, wrote letters. We had our friends write letters. We had our family write letters, but our bill unfortunately never even made it to a subcommittee. This, of course, was very discouraging. But I know that there are two sides to the coin when it comes to newborn screening, the legislative side and the public health side. So for the past year, I've talked with those who work in the state newborn screening lab and with those in the Center for Congenital and Inherited Disorders, which is under the Iowa Department of Public Health. Just recently, I was asked to join the Congenital and Inherited Disorders Advisory Committee as a parent advocate. This committee reviews and recommends additions to the newborn screening panel in Iowa. A disease is reviewed by doctors and clinicians, newborn screening lab technicians, and others who have the medical expertise to judge if the disease should be added to the panel. Currently, a committee is reviewing two diseases that are in the same family of lysosomal storage diseases that Crebbe's disease is in. If these two diseases, MPS1 and Pompe disease, are recommended for the addition to the newborn screening panel, the committee may then look at the other diseases that can be screened with no additional lab prep and at no additional cost. And to my delight, of course, Crebbe disease is one of these additional diseases. So I'm looking forward to bringing a parent's perspective to the advisory committee. And as you might imagine, I hope that Crebbe disease will be on the table for discussion soon. I'm hopeful that Iowa will join the eight other states currently screening for Crebbe disease, including our near neighbors, Missouri and Illinois. A rare disease diagnosis in the family often brings a lot of chaos and upheaval. Sometimes, actually, probably mostly all the time, it seems as if the disease is in control. I think that advocacy can help us take back some of this control. And perhaps that is why, as parent advocates, we have a lot of enthusiasm and drive. We see the struggles of our children, and we want to make the world better for them. Sometimes, we can't make the world better for them, but we can make a difference for children in the future. I can't change the outcome of my son Joshua's life, but I can work to ensure that no other little boy born with Crebbe's disease in Iowa is without treatment and without a hope for the future. So I work for that in memory of my son Joshua. Adding Crebbe disease to the newborn screening panel won't change anything for my daughter's Laura's life, but knowing that all children born in Iowa will be screened for Crebbe disease would be one of the greatest legacies that she could leave. So I work for that in celebration of Laura's beautiful life. Thank you so much for listening today, and I hope this Sunday on Rare Disease Day 2121 that you will think of all the families in Iowa that are in the rare disease community and that you will stand with us and hope. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, speakers. Those are certainly inspirational stories of advocacy. Just to remind us, as Brooke mentioned in the opening, today was just an attempt for us to create some space together to hear stories of advocacy, discuss some of the pressing issues facing Iowans with disabilities, and then to share a little bit of our work with the, with the Iowa Developmental Disability Council. One thing that you'll hear true through each one of these advocates that they all have in common is a personal collaboration, a conversation, passion, a shared purpose with a legislator. That's how they're getting momentum, and that's how they're getting efforts going on some of the concerns that they have, what changes we can make together, correctly. And, and when Amanda and I and Carol and Brady kind of spoke leading up to this, that's what I was kind of hoping that we'd be able to kind of hear is the message that they were able to kind of work together and collaborate on that. So next, to that end, next, I would like to give the opportunity to the wonderful and very busy legislators that joined us today, our Iowa representatives and senators who joined us. I wanted to see if any of them would like to make comments on the presentations, share thoughts to our speakers or any of their efforts. And I've unmuted them now, so you could go and... Amanda, go ahead. Senator Reagan?
Sure. Thank you so much for, for putting this together. This is, this is our way of communicating anymore. So, you know, I appreciate you taking the advantage of it and on a Friday when we're out of session. One of the things that I wanted to talk about was the changing tables. You know, that bill's been around for a while in the Senate and not just last year, but before, and I'm really disappointed that it isn't moving. I talked to Senator Jackie Smith, and she is in favor of it. She's on the subcommittee, but they did not hold a subcommittee yet, which is unfortunate. I have advocates in my area too that are, are talking to me about it. So I'm hoping that we can get it going once the House passes it. I think that'll be helpful. We, you know, I think that you're, you're, you know, talking about great things with funding because that's really where it comes down to is trying to equalize things out when you, you get the funding for things. It's really important. We're not having the same hearings in the Senate as we, as they are in the House on the budget committees, but I've always been a strong advocate for people with a disability and hopefully that we can make sure that there is adequate funding, reliable funding sources. Is a, hard to say because if you get, you know, I mean, I, there, the talk last year was to take it and put it in a, you know, have that extra that would be there. I'm just, I'm always concerned that when it gets involved in the general fund that something else takes a priority, which is, is concerning. We, we have great advocates, but always to get there and make sure that the funding is there is, doesn't always happen. And the good thing with Medicaid is we are having a good year with Medicaid simply because the federal matching rate, we're doing better with that, and, and it's important to note that that goes all the way to December 31st is my understanding, which is helpful to providers and helpful to others that know that funding's going to be there and that's going to be not cut. And, and, you know, having the enhanced rate is, is really critical. The other thing I would say is we're, we're trying to move a bill with the, helping with the able account. I, I have worked with Senator Edler, who is chair of the Humans Committee, and he is doing a study bill, I believe, to match the bill that I brought down. One of the things also is because of the federal changes, changing from not having to have conservatorship. If you just have guardianship, that you don't have to make that extra change to conservatorship. We're also working on some legislation there as well. So I probably talked enough. I'm really glad that you presented this. It was, you know, very nice. I, I think it's great when you can advocate on your own. It's, it's just special, touches my heart. And I certainly hope that we can move some of these things. If there's still time, don't give up. It's important that you keep advocating, and when you guys put a face on it, it makes it so much more important. Telling your family stories is, is the most important thing that you can do. And all the senators and representatives have, have your, your, you know, your, your heart, you know, want to do the best thing. They just don't always understand the circumstances. So that's why it's important you tell them and, you know, and advocate. So thanks again.
Thank you for making time for us. Okay. I'm having a tough time seeing everybody screen there. So if you are a legislator and you would like to speak, please either raise your hand or we'll call in here. I see.
Hello. Yes, this is Chris.
Yes, go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll join Senator Reagan in, in really offering some thanks to our, our presenters today, to Brady and Amanda and Carol. I think that your presentations really do help lend us a, a direct light into some of the issues that you're asking for assistance and support on. I think that not only did you do a great job of giving us a background on the issues, but you also are doing a tremendous service to others and helping them to see how you can be a, a successful advocate and move the dial on some of these things in the legislature. Two of the colleagues that were, were mentioned of mine, Representative Tracy Ellert and also Representative Kristen Sundie. I'm great, very glad to hear that they've been helpful on the birth screenings issue and also the adult changing tables. I do think that the adult changing tables bill, I've heard that it has a, a good potential to move out of the House chamber, and I would, of course, like to see that pass out of, of the Senate as well. And we need to continue encouraging senators in the majority party, who are Republican, to at least give that a subcommittee or give some attention to the bill when it comes over to them from the House. More than anything, I think this is a helpful update, and I just really appreciate you taking time out of your week to invite us. Thanks to my friend, Robert Fisher, for the invitation to join this afternoon. I think it's a, a great connection to make, and, and I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Representative Hall. Robert is one of our great members of our DD Council, so thank you. I think Representative Bush would like to speak as well. Were we able to unmute you there? Give us a second here. We're going to unmute you, I think.
Didn't, there we go.
There we go. There we go. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for, you know, scheduling this and for the presentations. I do know that the, you know, the adult changing stations did pass out a committee, and it's waiting debate on the House floor. I'm very supportive of that, as I have a granddaughter who will in her lifetime have to use that. I have one that will be in a wheelchair entire life. So I'm very supportive of that, very supportive of what your organization's trying to do. So I like to stay, you know, try to keep abreast of, of what's occurring and the, what legislation that you're trying to put forward. And please feel free to contact me anytime that issues come up.
Thank you again, Representative Bush. I thank you for your time. I think we have Senator Giddens also there. I'm not sure if you're indicated to speak. Can we get him? Gentlemen, unmuted. There we are.
Thank you. I, I didn't have my hand up, but I did, did just want to thank all of you for all of this wonderful information that you've presented and the stories that you've shared. Senator Reagan did a, a great job of going through the issues and where different bills stand in, in our chamber. And so I don't really have anything to add to that, but I, I would just like to give a shout out to Eric Do Not, who's on the call right now. He's a super strong advocate here in Black Hawk County. Keeps me well informed of these issues, and I, I just want to thank him in front of all of you. So take care and, and, and keep up the good fight, and we're here to do whatever we can to support you. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Giddens. Thank you. Senator Sarah Trump-Garrett?
I'm so sorry. I'm kind of hopping back and forth between two calls, so I'm trying not to be distracting, and my timing isn't working out so well. But thank you all so much for sharing your stories. It's, there's power in community and in sharing those stories to help really name how these policies are impacting folks in need. And I'm sorry. Turned something off so it doesn't distract. And it's, for me, a big part of my work is trying to help the community understand how they can engage in the legislative process. Sometimes people feel overwhelmed, like they just don't have a voice. And so trying to name some simple ways people can be engaged and keep up with what's going on. And it is overwhelming, especially when you also have challenges in your life, you know, caring for a loved one that, that has particular needs. And so that's why it's so great to have community like you do, to support one another and give each other heads up about what's going on. On my Facebook page and my newsletter, I share a lot of, you know, this is what's happening right now. Here are some ideas about how you can engage. And the legislative website really has some great resources that help people navigate and see what's going on and take part. And one of the most awesome things about COVID, and I don't think I would say that normally, is that subcommittee meetings are by Zoom right now, and it's so helpful for people, no matter what their situation or where they're living, they can participate and give input. And I hope that's something that we continue to do because it's amazing to see people from all over the state being able to participate in these meetings and speak to elected leaders and share their stories.
Thank you, Senator Garrett. I don't think I have anybody else there to speak, but I just wanted to kind of connect on something you said there. Prior to our town hall meeting, we, at 11:00 AM, we had our, we have a monthly Capitol chat where we go over legislation that's kind of connected to people with disabilities. We had over 50 people today attend, and we just kind of went through some of the bills that are top of mind. And I think that those resources that are on Iowa legislators are also on our own website, which is called InfoNet, make it very accessible for people to kind of find out what bills are coming through and, and, and how to comment and share their advocacy. And I'm really happy, especially Senator Giddens' comment about the individual relationships that people on our council are also people in the state of Iowa have made with legislators to, to make sure their voice is heard. So I was just going to kind of move into the chat and see if there's some additional questions. I think, Brady, you had a question that you wanted to ask?
Yes. So on the bill that's trying to be passed on adult changing tables, those would be put in all Iowa rest stops, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. And are they going to be accessible in both male and female bathrooms?
Amanda, I'm not...
Yeah, so they're probably not going to be in every single rest stop that is in Iowa. Right now, we are only looking at modern rest stops. And also, we are looking more so at a family restroom than a male or female restroom because every caregiver, every caregiver is a different person. So if we can put it in one localized space for a family restroom, I think it would accommodate more.
Does that mean that these rest areas will have to build or equip the rest up with the family bathroom then?
For the restrooms that are already in place, I am sure that they are going to put it in a male and a female's restroom. For the new...
For the new buildings of rest areas, we have associated that it's better to have a family bathroom versus a male or female.
Sure. Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. I kind of give a better idea of what's going on here with that, so.
Okay, I'm not seeing any additional questions. If you're interested, you can certainly raise your hand. Otherwise, I will just thank everybody for attending today. I want to take a second to thank everybody for attending and participating in advocacy for the Iowa Developmental Disability Council. It's important for us to collaboratively share our voice, but also to work collaboratively with the legislators. I want to thank them for working so hard each day for each of us, and I know this is a busy three months. I know it's really intense, and so we appreciate you keeping your ears open for our messages. And I hope everybody has a great Friday, and thank you.